Okay, we're live.
Can you hear me, Michelle?
Yes, and we are live. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Here we go. Welcome to the April 17, 2023, meeting of the Finance and Facilities Committee of the University of Rhode Island, Board of Trustees. The meeting is being held in person with committee members participating remotely. At this time, Board Secretary Michelle Correa will conduct a roll call attendance to determine if quorum is present. Please clearly respond present via WebEx or present in person when your name is called.
Bahid Anjazi Eddy.
Present via WebEx.
Armin Sabatoni.
Present via WebEx.
Michael Facitelli.
Present via WebEx.
David Monarano. Courtney Nicolato.
Present in person.
Susan Petrovus.
Present via WebEx.
And President Mark Caron.
Present via WebEx.
We have a quorum. I'd also like to announce that Board Margot Cook is present and participating as an invited guest. And also recognize those who are in the room. We have Alyssa Bois, Carl Calvo, Tracy Angel, Sharon, Kenyon Blackmar, Ryan Carrillo, Abby Ryder, James, and Lynn Owens. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge that the University of Rhode Island occupies its traditional homeland, the Marigantin Nation, and the Niantic people. The first order of business is the approval of the minutes of the February 9, 2023, Facilities and Finance Committee. May I have a motion?
This is Armin, so move.
Second?
This is Courtney, second.
Thank you. Any discussions on a motion? There being no discussion or further discussion, I ask for for vote, if all in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimously approved. Next item, the agenda is discussing items, number two. No, I'm sorry. At this point, I'd like to introduce Abby Ryder and John Pullman, Assistant Vice President for Financial Strategy and Planning.
Abby? Thank you very much, Bahid. It's my pleasure today to present to you John Pullman, who has joined us as Director of Financial Strategy and Planning for the University Assistant Vice President. He joins us from the University of North Carolina Wilmington, where he was a Director of Budget Planning and Analysis in Business Affairs from March 2022 until last month. Prior to that, he was with the University of Delaware in Newark. He was Senior Director of Planning and Analysis in the University Budget Office from September 19 to 2022, and held previous positions for that starting in August of 2015. He got his first financial training, I think, as a financial analyst, which I think is excellent. That's how I started too. And he has an MBA from the University of Delaware. Today, the first discussion item that we're going to talk about is the projected FY 2023 performance versus budget. And I'm going to ask John to make that presentation. So, John, perhaps you'd like to introduce yourself again, say hello to everyone, and then talk about our projection of FY 23 versus budget.
Sure thing. Thanks, Abby, for the introduction. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak here with you today. Mark, Barb, Abby Benson, all of the members that I've met with and engaged with thus far have been very accommodating as I look to get myself permanently relocated to the Rhode Island area in the very near future. So, joining us today currently from North Carolina. Looking forward to engaging more deeply with the board in the future. And so, before I get started, I wanted to go ahead and make a couple of acknowledgements. First, I wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge Cheryl Hanksen and Kelly Slocum, who have served as interim co-directors of budget for the past 18 months prior to my arrival. They continue to be an invaluable resource and a thought partner as we navigate our institution's budgetary challenges. Second, I want to acknowledge that the slides that I'm about to walk us through differ slightly from those previously provided in the enclosure. Materials included in the enclosure begin with a $12.7 million operating deficit as our starting point, as this was inclusive of the material differences versus the FY 23 budget as identified through our mid-year review process. Since providing those materials, the university administration felt it would provide greater clarity to you all to provide variance explanations against our original FY 23 budgeted operating deficit of $11.3 million within our unrestricted funds. And so, with that, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Okay, is everyone able to see my screen okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Great. And so, with this $11.3 million operating shortfall in mind, URI's leadership made some difficult choices in delaying critical institutional priorities in support of our strategic plan, while also deploying internal controls around our hiring processes. This slide that you see in front of you is a depiction of the financial impacts of these measures, as well as other material differences in comparison to budget. And so, while I won't read off all of these items, please note that a positive amount represents an item that's contributing favorably towards mitigating our budgeted operating deficit, whereas a negative amount represents an item that would increase the operating deficit. The bottom line is that, in total, we are forecasting that we will break even on operations in FY 23, primarily due to reduced hiring of both faculty and staff. I commend university leadership for continuing to prioritize responsible financial stewardship. Even these decisions may not always be popular with the campus community. This next slide provides more detail around the areas that have been most significantly impacted by the hiring measures put into place. While these only represent the areas most significantly impacted, it's safe to say that most areas across campus have felt the impacts of these measures. Reduced hiring ultimately sets us back from achieving our desired results as an institution and from providing maximum growth back into the state economy. And so, what does this all mean? In summary, our FY 23 forecast is primarily a result of one-time actions being taken to mask permanent budgetary issues. This is not a sustainable, long-term strategy. The $11.3 million operating shortfall that we began the year with in FY 23 will persist and carry forward into the FY 24 budget. This concludes my presentation. Happy to take any questions from the board at this time.
Any questions? Can anybody hear me? Are there any questions?
No questions.
No, no questions. Abby, thank you. Thank you very much. Abby? Item, next item?
The next item is item C, the Capital Improvement Plan, for FY 2025 to FY 2029. Just as a reminder, because we're in continuous budget cycles, this is actually the first submittal that we give to the Office of Management and Budget for the FY 25 budget, as opposed to the FY 24 budget, which is in front of the legislature right now. And sometimes it's difficult to keep those separate. So, just think of this as this is for the budget submittal that we're going to give to OMB in the fall, in September. And with that, I'd like to turn over to Ryan Carrillo, the Director of Planning and Real Estate, who will present the highlights of the Capital Improvement Plan for FY 25 through 29.
Thank you, Abby. Again, this is Ryan Carrillo. I have just a few slides here to present on the capital plan. Happy to take any questions, so feel free to interrupt me. The slide that you currently see are the projects that are in progress within the capital plan. The first slide is the current budget that would be proposed in the upcoming submission. The second, the fourth column here is the budget that was submitted last year that the legislature is currently looking at. There's the delta between the two and the primary source of funding. So, really, on the current projects, there are only three that have had financial changes. I'll highlight those, the dining improvements. We've reduced the budget by $1.4 million to $3.6 million to focus only on one dining hall and to reflect the current funding that has been identified by the auxiliary. The second?
Let's move, sorry.
Okay. The second is, let me just, one second.
Okay.
Okay. The second? Okay. The second is the Fine Arts Project. Okay. We have reduced the project's second phase by $5 million, which was previously anticipated to be privately supported. We haven't found donors that have shown interest in supporting this project for the interior renovations of the theater concert hall spaces. So, we will be proceeding forward with the base project, which was a $73.3 million project to build the new building to provide more space, more adequate space for the three fine arts departments within. Lastly, the NBC Marigantin Bay Campus Phase Two renewal. Last year, we had asked for $157.5 million. The state approved $25 million in, so $100 million, $100 million in bond, geobond, and $25 million in RICAP. In addition to private monies that have been pledged towards that of the $4 million, we now have a proposed $129 million project. So, a delta, a reduction of $28.5 million. Are there any questions about the ongoing projects?
Ryan, what does that mean? What are we giving up for these decreases like at the Bay Campus? What's not going to happen?
Yeah, so the Bay Campus originally had, I'll go through the whole original scope. So, we had the replacement of the Horn Lab, the creation of the Ocean Frontiers Building. We had the replacement of the Ocean Engineering Complex with two new buildings. We had the renovation of the Coastal Institute Building. We had the renovation in addition to the Marine Geological Samples Laboratory. And we had the creation of a new Entry Security Building at the entrance to campus. The project, due to the change in funding, is now focusing on the more critical top priorities for the institution to replace the Horn Laboratories with Ocean Frontiers Building to support the ongoing and expanding GSO research and also to support the improvements necessary for ocean engineering. So, we're focused on those, that smaller subset at this time, which will have the most impact on the students and researchers.
Thank you.
Ryan, can you, it's Margot. Can you go back to the dining? I know it doesn't look like a lot, but as someone who gets a lot of letters from parents, dining is one of the topics. So, can you just go back and tell us what we're not going to do there?
Yeah, so actually, that's, Margot, thank you for the question, because that actually is what we're focusing on now. Originally, the project had two buildings that were going to be affected. We were going to be doing improvements at the Dining Distribution Center, which is the warehouse. It's the back of house space. It's vital for the operations of the dining services, but it's not space that's seen by the students or part of their daily life. The other piece was renovations to our Hope Commons. Main Fair Dining Hall opened in 2008. That's the space that's really tangible to the students. So, as you can imagine, 2008, it's building with some life behind it, 15 years. It hasn't been upgraded since that point. So, the focus now, although at a reduced level, is to focus all of that money into the project that affects the daily life of students and improve the main fair dining experience.
So, would we try to? Could we phase that in at some later point?
Yeah, so we will. That's the intention is, in the future, then we could go back as a second project and do additional improvements at Dining Distribution. We are proceeding-
Which is a different building.
Yeah, which is a different building. We are proceeding at Dining Distribution just with some code required updates from a separate funding source, but it's going to be the main improvements that reconfigure this space would be at a later time.
Okay, thanks.
Welcome.
Just a quick question, Ryan, or Abby, whoever wants to answer this one. On the PFAS Removal Water Treatment Plant, the timing of that, if you could share with the committee and where we stand today?
Certainly. Just in high-level terms, where we are right now is determining what, we have a strategy for how we're going to approach the treatment of PFAS on our water. We are going to do a sort of an interim measure and then a long-term measure. We are in the process of working with designers and Department of Health on exactly how that plan will go forward. And we are waiting for the next step, which will probably be active design of the solutions. So, we're going, we're going, Carl spends most of his day doing this because it's obviously a top priority.
So, anticipation is by next year, we'll have the plant going?
We will certainly have the interim, the plan is to have the interim solution in place by, say, a year from now approximately.
About a year.
And then, we'll start on the long-term remedy, which will take two to five, right? Not even five, two to four.
I was going to say three to four.
Three to four, okay, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. So, the next item, Abby, I believe, is the Board's Procurement Regulation. Report on the experience to date. This is what everybody remembers. We adjusted some of the regulations about procurement. And I think Tracy's going to share. Tracy Angel is going to work with Abby on this one.
Yes, Bahid, before we proceed, we have another slide on the Capital Improvement Plan for the things that are already out here. Is that okay?
Okay. So, we only have two changes. We only have two changes for upcoming projects. One is, as you're aware, we have a fairly substantial athletic complex renewal before the legislature right now. The governor's recommended budget level did not support the full project. Under the assumption that that stays with where the governor's recommendation was, several of the projects will have to be pushed forward by one year. And that would, that reflects the change here of $2.1 million. And that's based on one more year of escalation at a assumed 5% escalator. The Project 28, the Life Science Building, which will be, this will be the CIP that the legislature considers when setting the bond referendum for the geobond in 2024. This project has been reevaluated through the lens of the COVID impact to construction, although the scope remains the same at a 50,000-square-foot lab building to be built on the north side of the Dooley Science Quad. We do anticipate a $10.8 million increase to offset the current economic environment. Any questions on future projects?
Curious as to how conversations are going with the GA specifically about what's being proposed on the governor's budget for this coming year, for this upcoming, this year, 24.
Perhaps Mark would like to respond to that, since he is actively involved. Mark, did you want to talk to how conversations with the legislature are going?
Well, first of all, thanks, everyone, for the URI Day on the Hill. That was very, that was very useful. We've already had a meeting with the House Finance Committee. We're meeting next week with the Senate Finance Committee. Ahead of time, of course, we have regular meetings with the governor, with the Senate President, and the Provost. Provost, Barb Wolf and I have met with the Speaker. I think it's an ongoing conversation. There are some hopeful signs. The governor's budget obviously made some attempt on some of the critical asks, but, you know, PFAS being one that we really need help with, obviously a number of other things. So, I would say it's a work in progress for, and the next few weeks are kind of critical in how this goes.
Bahid, there's one final slide on the CIP presentation.
Sure.
Okay, so this is just a look forward at our current general obligation bond strategy. So, the Life Science Building that we just spoke about being increased by $10.8 million. The ask for that bond would be $87.45 million. Looking to the next bond in '26, the focus would be on restoring the first phase of our historic building. So, Edwards East, Washburn, and Morale for an ask of $96.3 million. And then, in the '28 bond, which although not reflected on this year's plan, just to give us the look forward, would be the historic Phase Two, which is Roosevelt, Quinn, and Davis at $122 million. That is a change from last year's projections. We've changed the escalator on that project from 4% a year to 5% a year to reflect the current market conditions that we expect over the upcoming years. That's some timeout. You know, that project, although starting in '28, would not be wrapping up for well over 10 years from now. So, that is a long-term look forward.
And I would like to point out that those two projects, in combination with the Athletics Complex renewal, would make a significant improvement in our deferred maintenance. Because those three areas, I mean, well, the quad and the athletics complex are two of the areas that exhibit the most deferred maintenance on campus.
Any questions? If not, that completes my presentation.
Thank you, Ryan.
Okay, the next item, as you had introduced, Bahid, is Board Procurement Regulations. Reporting on experience to date, you'll remember that we approved new procurement regulations. And so, we put on the Finance and Facilities calendar simply to report back to this group on our experience. I think maybe looking at unintended consequences, which is always something that one is concerned about when you change regs. And to give the update, which I think is pretty good news, I'd like to introduce Tracy Angel, who's our Director of Purchasing. You'll remember her from when we put the regulations in place. Tracy?
Good afternoon. Happy to report we've seen no adverse conditions from the update from the regulations. Everything seems to have gone smoothly. People were very happy to receive the news. To date, we expect that there were over 2,600 POs valued between $500 and $5,000, which in the past would have required three quotes, which now did not require any, and roughly 216 POs from $5,000 to $10,000 that would have required either a public bid solicitation or three quotes off of a master price agreement that, again, now could go to a sole vendor. So, that's definitely shown an improvement in timing and processing. So, it has been well received by the campus and no adverse reaction to that. Additionally, I'd just like to mention that we are actively in process for installing our new procure-to-pay system, which is Jagger, which is expected to go live sometime after July of 2024, which will also greatly enhance the process and will be able to build in further for these valuations that we've added. And hopefully, at some point, we can also revisit these to see if there's a way to increase them further.
Right, I think that e-procurement is strategically critical for the university because we, you know, we have two major buckets of expenses, all the stuff we buy to do what we do and all the people that we pay to do what they do. And procurement is, by its nature, in a public institution. It has, it's got lots of regulations. An e-procurement system has the ability to embody workflows. And what that does is it relieves the the users of the system from needing to know what the rules are. They, they don't have to know all the ins and outs because the system will guide them through the purchasing experience. And that, in and of itself, we think will make a tremendous difference in the ease with which people can buy the things they need to do what they need to do.
Good pauses. Any comments, questions, or from anyone on the side? The next item is the Annual Review of the Finance and Facilities Committee Charter, as similar to all of other committees. And the initial housekeeping edits have been identified and read on the Finance and Facilities Committee Charter, which is linked to the agenda. Welcome all your input. And all the final edits will be reviewed at the June committee meeting. And the committee will recommend that the Board of Trustees approve the changes at that time. So, I'm not sure if you've had, if anybody's had a chance to review and make comments or not, but we have a little more time to send those in if you have any comments. Any comments on that at this time? Or we probably should, Michelle, we should be like leaving that open for folks to make some comments, right?
Yeah.
If there are additional comments?
Yeah.
And who do those go to, Michelle?
You can feel free to send them to me, and I'll work with you, Bahid, in terms, in the primary liaison, Abby, Ryder.
Okay, thank you. We move on to the next item. Again, there's an annual review of the Finance and Facilities Committee calendar. Once again, there've been edits on that, it's been updated, and some agenda items will be covered in the past meetings and future meetings. Again, I encourage everyone to take a look. And if you have any comments and items you want to bring up, please send us, and we'll update those and pass it off. We're good with this? All right, perfect. At this time, we want to, next item on the agenda, we have to go to executive session. This time, may I have a motion that the Finance and Facilities Committee of the URI Board of Trustees convene into executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42-46-5A5 for discussion or considerations related to acquisition or lease of real property for public purposes for the disposition of a publicly held property wherein advanced public information would be detrimental to the public interest, including student housing, URI campuses, and Peckham Farm. And Rhode Island General Law 42-46-5A7 for discussion of a matter related to the question of the investment of public funds with a premature disclosure would adversely affect the public interest. If, may I have a motion?
This is Armin, so move.
Mike Facitelli, second.
Any discussion regarding a motion? There being no discussion, may I have a voice vote? All in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, is approved. The committee will now convene into executive session for the reasons specified. It is anticipated the executive session will last approximately 20 minutes. After reached, the committee will reconvene in open session. The livestream will be paused during the executive session and will resume once the executive session has ended and the committee reconvenes in open session. For those committee members participating via WebEx, please confirm by saying yes that no other person is present or be able to hear the discussion at the remote location. If you do not automatically move into the breakout session, join the session when prompted on your computer screen by clicking the "Join Now" button. May I have a motion?
So, move.
I think we're done. We're going to go, we're going to go, yeah, it's done, sorry.
You did that.
I think we're going to get moved over now. We're going to join. I think we're gonna get moved over now. We're gonna join.
Okay.
There, I think we're back.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, James, perfect, thank you. Thanks, James. Okay, it looks like everybody's back.
I think so.
There you are, all right, and we are live.
Good.
Yeah.
So the Finance and Facilities Committee of the URI Board of Trustees is now convened in open session. The first order of the business is open session is to motion to seal the executive session minutes. May I have a motion?
Motion by Armin.
This is Courtney, second.
Thank you. Discussion? There being no discussions, may I have a voice vote? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Yeah. Motion is approved. Next agenda, in item number four, action items. Action item four, review of the steam plant services agreement contract between Naresco LLC and the University of Rhode Island, effective April 1, 2023, and recommendation for approval to the URI Board of Trustees. Abby, please take it away.
Yes, thank you. So this is a contract to operate our steam plant. And Naresco has been operating our steam plant for something like
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three years. And that's, that's a good thing because the steam plant is somewhat old. It is, it requires really expert management, and Naresco has done an outstanding job. Nonetheless, we have to bid these projects competitively, you know, these service agreements competitively, and we did so. And Naresco won the rebid. And this contract had been approved, it had been signed by the president, as was the, the signatory authority at the time that it was coming through. But it hadn't taken effect yet because we hadn't issued the actual purchase order. So at that time, the last board meeting, remember, we changed the signature authorities. And now item's over five million, and this contract is a big contract. It's a $49 million contract. And so this contract got caught in the change. So although it's really been fully executed by the university, we're bringing it to you. We've explained to Naresco that we had a change in signatory authority, and that should the board decide that it didn't want to approve the contract for whatever reason, we have a, a plan for how to exit it. Not that I would ever recommend that because Naresco really does an outstanding job running our steam plant. And they have recently been subjected to competitive bids, so we know that they're charging us a reasonable amount for the service. So I, I recommend that the, the finance committee recommend this to the board. And as I said, this is, we're just wanting to make sure that we comply with the new signature authority for execution of contracts that bind the university by bringing it to finance and facilities and to the board.
How many buildings need to steam? How many buildings need steam still?
Carl?
I would say probably about two-thirds of the buildings on campus.
Two-thirds, okay. All right.
Every time I'm on campus, my kids ask me about this.
The steam out of the sack, yeah. Just hot water.
Do we still have the old-fashioned radiators in some of those buildings?
We do, in the older buildings.
Yes.
We do.
Especially the ones on the quad, Armin, yeah.
We need to, we need to do a lot of work.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
Sorry, go ahead. So may I have a motion for the Finance and Facilities Committee to recommend that University of Rhode Island Board of Trustees approve the university entering into certain steam plant services agreement between the University of Rhode Island and Naresco LLC, effective April 1, 2023, as presented, and that the president and the vice president for the administration finance each be authorized to execute and deliver the contract on behalf of the University of Rhode Island.
I move it, this is Armin.
Second, Sue Petrovass.
Any discussion? There being no discussion, may I have a voice vote? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion passes.
By the, by the way, that's a big company, by the way, that's doing that. Yeah, they've been around a while.
I think we finally, to our last item, I think, Abby, and review request to demolish the building behind 3045 Kingston Road, identified by the town of South Kingston, the office's building 25, Platton 3-1, Lot 1, URI Kingston Campus, and recommendation for approval to URI Board of Trustees. Abby?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to ask Ryan to share his screen and, and project this. You, you may be familiar with 3045, which is the building with the rounded front that's right on Route 138, formerly known as the International Athlete Hall of Fame, but we call it 3045 now for clearer reasons. Right behind it, there is the shell of a building, which we call the annex, that was going to be sort of a residential hall or dormitory for international scholar athletes. But the project ran into the ground, as you probably are all aware, before it could be finished. So it is, right now, it is just a shell. It's really not suitable for any use that the university has. And we are going to be, you had already approved the demolition of Fernwood, which is the building over to the left in the aerial, right there, okay? And at the same time, we want to take this annex down because right now, all it's serving for is for the Kingston Fire Department to practice, you know, using ladders to get into second-story burning buildings. And every time they're practicing there, we get panic calls from people going, the, the annex is on fire. We go, no, it's not, they're practicing, so. But in any event, the, the building is really, it, it's not useful, it can't be particularly, it's, you've got very small rooms in it. Structurally, it doesn't lend itself to any appropriate university use, so we'd like to take it down. Ryan, do you want anything?
No, it's, it's an attractive nuisance to the community.
I have a funny story about this building. I pass this every time I, this is on my bike ride, and every time I pass it, I think, God, I hope somebody isn't stepping out of that second-floor door.
Yeah. Right, and it's a temptation, people try to get into it, too.
They park right behind Fernwood, usually.
Can they use this for the museum?
Uh, no, we, we actually asked them that, and it doesn't lend itself well even to, to their purposes because it's so chopped up inside.
What's the thought about 3045? Because that's empty right now, right?
Um, we're about to embark on a vast study to look, it may be suitable for public safety.
Okay.
Which is now in a building that has serious issues as a public safety.
Does the fire department know we're taking down that practice facility?
We haven't told them yet because we didn't want to tell them if it wasn't approved. But if it's approved, then we will, of course, let them know.
Unless they're watching the public meeting, Armin.
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, that's a really good parcel.
I hope they don't get angry with us.
That's a really good parcel of land, though, if you look at it in totality, like, there's a lot of nice land there.
Yeah. Yes. And it's on
It'd be a good place for some student housing.
That's what I, I mean, it's a little far away, but
Yeah, the, the main drawback
If you could build it, Borga.
Yeah.
The main drawback is that it's very isolated from the rest of the student community. So you might be able to do some other things with it. It's a, you know, it's a, it's a good parcel. And so we're, you know, we're looking at possible uses for it. That will come out when we start our, the work on our master plan, our campus master plan. That will certainly be under consideration.
And there's no chance that And there's no chance that could be for graduate student, or
It's not
Have you thought about that?
It, it was constructed with a single means of egress inside, which is not fire code compliant for university housing.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, with that in mind, may I have a motion that the Finance and Facilities Committee recommend that the University of Rhode Island Board of Trustees approve the request to demolish the building behind 3045 Kingston Road, identified by the town of South Kingston Assessor's Office as Building 25, Plat 23-1, Lot 1, at the University of Rhode Island Kingston Campus.
This is Courtney, so moved.
May I have a second?
Petrovaz.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? There being no discussion, may I have a voice vote? All in favor? Yes.
Yes.
No? I mean, no, opposed, no? Okay, unanimous, we pass. Next agenda, the item on the agenda is item number five. Abby, you want to take this one away, too?
No.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Motion, Mike Passatelli.
I'll go second. All in favor?
Yes. Thank you, Bee.
We adjourn, we'll see you on Friday, thank you.
Good job, Bee, you came